Good morning. This is Steve Stephanides with Coastal Breeze News. On behalf of Al Simon, the publisher for the paper, we welcome you to the podcast that we're doing regarding city council candidates here on Marco Island. Got a list of questions to ask each candidate as far as some of the things that are hot buttons on the island now. We don't lack any of those usually. Today with us is Dr. Rich Belana, who is a city councilman now and running for reelection for another four years. And Rich, welcome to this.
Welcome everyone.
Yeah, that's good. Let's get right at it, okay? Because your time's valuable anyhow. All right. For you, what are the top three items that you feel are important going forward for the residents of the island?
Number one, I'd like to continue the work I've been doing in acquiring prime habitat for our gopher tortoises, our burrowing owls, and our other species. We are so unique here on Marco Island. And unless we protect this habitat, it's going to be built on because most of the lots that house the tortoises and the owls are in the residential single-family zone. I was lucky enough to get Conservation Collier to help us acquire three acres of land in my first term and return over $5 million to the residents. So I'd like to keep that work going. I guess the second thing that I've been working on that I think is important is continuing our work to improve the quality of our waterways. And it's been controversial. I've been on this since 2017 when I started working with Sam Young in his bid for election to the council. He ran on a platform of clean waterways. I got to learn a lot working there. Started to attend the city council meetings. Actually, it was in the interviews when we finally decided on Dr. Harper to do our water quality study. So a lot of things came out of that study, a lot of recommendations. And the whole impetus for that was the fact that we were impaired for nitrogen. And since then, we've enacted a bunch of remediation strategies. We actually have a plan that we're wedded to with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection called the 4E Remediation Plan. So my second priority is to see that plan through, get off the nitrogen impaired list, and then get to the next level of water quality studies. You know, looking at things like the oxygen level in our waterways, algae blooms, which are a big concern, and these benthic mats that occasionally bring all this crud to the surface that you see in your canals. So that would be my second priority. And then I guess my third priority is finding creative ways to make up the loss of the one cent sales tax revenue. We've been blessed on Marco Island to be able to go to the rollback millage rate. And one of the main reasons we have is because of outside sources of revenue. And that one cent sales tax revenue that we were getting for several years really paid for a lot of our infrastructure needs. So we have to make that money up. And if we want to do it in a way that doesn't impact taxes, we're going to have to look for grants. We're going to have to look for other sources of state and federal dollars. And that's going to be my third priority is to figure out a way to get those additional revenues we need to make up the loss of the one cent sales tax.
Great, thanks Rich. How would you propose the city adjust the budget process that we have used since day one, okay? Which really begins in May, all right? How would you adjust it to bring more citizen input into how you do your budgeting? Because a lot of people, a great percentage of people, are gone during that period of time. And the budget is set. How would you propose making a change? Or maybe you feel it's okay the way it is?
Well, I mean, it's really hard because the city operates on a schedule where fiscal year begins in October. So preparation for the beginning of the new fiscal year has to begin months before that. And unfortunately, those are the months when half the island is away. So there's no easy way to solve that problem. I guess, you know, maybe getting the word out that people can take part in these meetings at a distance, making that line of communication at a distance clearer. I know some people have a hard time with things like Zoom. And maybe there's more efficient ways to link up residents who are not here with the process. For residents that are here, you know, there are preliminary operating budget and capital budget hearings. And they're usually during the day. So maybe a way to get more people involved, especially working people, would be to hold all budget hearings in the evening. And that may be a second strategy. But as far as the way things are, the only other thing I have to say about the budget, and this is kind of curious, is that we've been giving the city manager and the finance director the signal that develop us a budget based on the rollback rate. And then they come forth and they do that. And while I support the concept of keeping low taxes, I think the budget should be started by saying, what are the needs of the city? What do we need to do? What do we need to accomplish? And then go from there. And then we'll look for ways to cut it back and bring it down. But I think that might be a different way to approach budgeting.
Good, thank you. Okay. Are the city advisory committees effective as designed? Remember, we've been a city for 26 years, 27 years, okay? Advisory committees were part of the idea to help give you guys input, have them develop things, okay? What are your suggestions based upon how they're set up now?
Well, it's interesting because I had exactly the same feelings about, you know, how effective are the advisory committees? How do they operate? So I actually pulled the resolutions that created all the advisory committees. And I noticed one of the things that was an issue of the residents was funding. That a lot of residents were saying, why are advisory committees getting a budget? You know, they're not a department in the city. They shouldn't have a budget. And it made me look at the resolutions. And there actually was nothing in the resolutions that mentioned funding. It had been an arbitrary decision by previous city council to give them $10,000 a year to spend. And I wanted to change that. I wanted to link whatever budgets advisory committee had to clear goals. So in other words, you want some money. What are you going to do with it? What's your goal? What are your measurable objectives that are associated with that goal? And then attach a budget to it. So if you want $5,000 to study something, tell us what you want to study. Tell us what the outcomes are. And then apply for that money. And then report back at the end of the budget cycle and say, here's what we found. So I guess you obviously know, Steph, you're at the meetings. I set up a goal. I got the city council to agree with me to rewrite all the resolutions that created the advisory committees and to base their funding on clear measurable goals and objectives. And then I personally trained each of the advisory committees. I did a goal training workshop. And in some cases, multiple goal training workshops for each advisory committee with the exception of audit. Because audit is in us and planning board. They're in separate categories. But things like waterways beautification. So I spent time developing training sessions. And each of them for this fiscal year, starting in '24, '25, I'm sorry, '25, '26, they had to submit their written goals and objectives if they wanted to get a budget. So I think that process of connecting their work to some clear goals that they set will give us some idea of, and then also, the other thing is, I really built the city council back into the process. Over the years, instead of advising us as city council, the advisory committees took on more of an advisory role to the staff. And I always felt that I thought the city council, the advisory committees were there if we on the city council needed some guidance and some expert advice on something that we lacked. So I built into the process in the resolutions that there's a city council member who's a liaison to each advisory committee as well as a staff liaison. So now those committee members and that chair had a clear conduit to the staff through the city council. And I think that's important. I think you need accountability that goes both through the council and through the staff as far as the work of the advisory committees. The advisory committees work hard. There's some really smart people who have incredible backgrounds, things they've done in a previous life or in their present job, who bring a wealth of information that we on the city council lack. I mean, I'm not a water quality expert. And I've learned a lot. And a lot of it's come through working with people on that advisory committee.
Good. All right. This one should be simple. You just pull the answer right out of the bag.
Oh yeah, I'm sure.
How can the city better communicate, or council better communicate with its residents? Communication seems to be a big thing.
Yeah. I know one of the things that's been tossed around by a couple of people I really respect is to start a written newsletter and to have that written newsletter available. Kind of like you go to the newspaper rack and you get the coastal breeze. You know, if there was distribution centers for a written newsletter that maybe came out quarterly. That's one new piece of advice that I've heard. We could definitely make the landing page on the city website more friendly, more resident-friendly, so that there would be a link on top that says, current newsletter or current items. You click on it and it brings you exactly to where you want to get to. I think the ability to communicate with residents during council meetings and the ability for residents to express themselves is excellent. As a matter of fact, it's better than the Board of County Commissioners. The BCC has one communication period during each meeting for residents to speak, and it's three minutes. We offer residency opportunity to speak for four minutes in the beginning, at a time certain citizens' communications section in the beginning of the meeting, and at the end. So that's eight minutes that people can come up and talk. And they also can comment on anything that's on the agenda. So you can comment during citizen communication on items that are not on the agenda and then on items that are on the agenda just by filling out a slip and doing it. And once again, we get to an issue now with communicating at a distance. You know, sometimes the Zoom communication and the Zoom connection doesn't work as smoothly and it's not as easy to understand. I'm 73 and a lot of my colleagues, my people on the island are older than that. And they're not used to working with things like Zoom. They're not used to dialing in on a phone. So there's got to be ways to maybe make it easier for people to tune in. But going to a print newsletter, making the interface on the homepage on the website a little easier to navigate, and maybe helping people link up remotely are three things that I could think of.
Okay, good. I threw you a softball on that one. Now this will be the hard ball and you're all your eyes on this one. Okay. What can be done, all right, to assist code enforcement to be more effective to the needs of the residents?
More effective to the needs of the residents, wow.
That's what it's for, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know that code enforcement versus code compliance is an issue. Some people want to see it be more of an enforcement. And others think right now it's emphasizing more on compliance. And I understand both sides of that coin because I've talked to Chief Ruzano. I've talked to the head of code enforcement. And they really want to give residents the opportunity to learn what they're doing incorrectly and to improve, all right? But then there's been a lot of citizen criticism about that. That is too lenient, that especially with visitors, we need to enforce the codes more vigorously. I'm kind of caught in the middle because I understand both perspectives. The other thing is, I think we could increase the level of staffing in code enforcement. You know, our code enforcement officers, we don't have a full-time staff. There are a lot of part-timers. They do everything from patrol the beach to help out in emergency situations with traffic and things like that, as well as investigating things that are brought before them by the residents. And then on their own, driving the neighborhoods and picking up on violations. It's really a lot to expect. And we don't have an overnight code enforcement shift. And that might be something that could help tremendously if we had a second shift that went on and cruised the neighborhoods during the evening. Because things like parking and trash violations routinely occur in the evening after code enforcement hours are over. So that would be one concrete thing I think we could do. But a lot of it's relying on funding and staffing. And the city has been trying to hold the line on expenses. So it's not an easy problem to deal with. I personally respect the code enforcement officers. I think they've got a tough job. And it's about all I can think of off the cuff.
So what you just said, okay, does code enforcement actually do that routine traveling through neighborhoods to see whether there's an issue? Or it's been told to people that they only respond to?
No, they do both. Actually, if you look at the monthly report that the chief of police submits, at the end of every city council meeting, there's a section called Department Reports. And each department has to report in on what they did over the month. So there's a section in Chief Ruzano's police report that goes into detail on code enforcement. And she has a pie graph that shows of the number of code enforcement calls, how many were self-initiated. In other words, those officers took the initiative. And it's funny, the overwhelming majority now, I believe it's at least 60% of those code enforcement stops are self-initiated. Now, do they miss things? Of course they do. Do they have to prioritize? Well, should I stop here or should I go there? Of course they do. It's a thankless job. They usually never hear from people until somebody wants to bitch and moan about something. But no, the majority of calls are self-initiated by the officers.
Okay, that answers. This one is a three-part thing. It's a three-part question.
I'll try and keep trying.
No, no. I will just, we'll deal one, two, and three, okay? But the environment is really an economic driver on the island itself, our environmental issues. What plans would you enact to address these environmental issues? Number one, and we'll take them one at a time. And I'll give you a couple of minutes on each. As of September 2024, the disorientation of sea turtle hatchlings is higher on Marco Island than it is any other location within the county. What would you do to turn this number around so that we're not winning that race for so many disorientation runs by the turtle?
You know, to compare Marco to the other places where sea turtle false crawls are recorded is something that I can't do because I don't really have the data. I don't know about Naples and North Naples and the different places where these things are recorded. But I can speak to Marco Island. So in other words, to say, are we percentage-wise, do we have a worse problem than St. Naples does? I don't know, Steph. But I know that it's a matter of education and it's a matter of enforcement. And since I've been on council, the sea turtle lighting ordinance has been revised. I supported the revisions. I made comments on the revisions. I studied the whole issue of lighting and lumens and how lighting is directed and coverings for windows along the beachfront condos and different window materials. So it's really complicated. And our ordinance does address all those issues. It talks about lighting and how far off the beach lighting should be and how it should be directed downward with shades. It addresses material for windows and coverings. And it specifically addresses when people have to be cognizant of this because it's sea turtle nesting season and when not. So I think the ordinance is solid. Now, the second part is educating people about the ordinance. Most of the stuff related to sea turtles and false crawls relates to beachfront condos and the area immediately adjacent to the beach. And that's where the focus of all the education occurs. Now, I know for a fact that the education is done by our code enforcement officers. They actually go out on a regular basis to the condos. They hold meeting with the condo associations. They give them literature. So there's an active schedule of going out and doing these educational presentations. Another large chunk of it is done by volunteers, through members of the Beach and Coastal Resources Advisory Committee and Autobahn. So there are groups of people that are currently doing it. And is it enough? Is it ever enough? There's a lot of folks that live along the beach. You know, what people don't realize is probably at least 40% of our population resides along the beach. When you look at the number of residents in beachfront condos and homes directly across the street on the next block, it's a significant chunk of our population. And a lot of those folks are seasonal. So being able to educate them when they're here requires a massive effort. So probably one thing we could do is maybe recruit and train more volunteers or maybe even hire some beach educators, rather. So that's the second part. First part was writing the code. Second part was having people teach the residents and the visitors the code. And then the third part is enforcement, you know, getting people out on the beach. So once again, now we come to the issue of code enforcement and not having an overnight shift. You know, when do the false crawls occur? When do the lighting violations occur? Well, they occur in the evening. So it's when we are least staffed to do that and yet we need it the most. So those are issues that we have to sit down with the chief and with the head of code enforcement and look at ways to beef up the actual citations and compliance. But I'm telling you, it's not an easy thing to do. There are some crazy regulations on how you gauge whether lighting is in the right direction. It's too many lumens. It's not an easy thing to do when you're measuring it from the actual shoreline compared to the mean high water level. There are different things to take into account when you're measuring. So it's not easy, but it is being done. And again, I think it's all a matter of, do we want to hire additional educators? Do we want to hire additional code enforcement people? I don't really think we need to do anything with the ordinance. I think that's been revised. And I haven't heard anybody come to us, yeah.
Okay, all right. Number two.
Oh, that's a step. Yeah, but three-part question, I'm sorry.
This one you're going to be very in tune to, okay? Because I've watched what you do. Would you endorse the city buying its own conservation lots to protect burrowing owls and gopher tortoises?
Yes and no. What I was proposing, and what I still propose, is that we create an open space preservation fund. And what I'd like to do is cede that fund with some money. So my initial proposal was ceded with $200,000, $250,000, just so we have money in a fund. What that allows us to do is apply for matching grants. Most of the grants that are available from the state and from the federal government to purchase open space, to purchase habitat that's in jeopardy, require some kind of matching fund. So that was, I'd like to see it as being a 50-50 proposition. Right now, we're doing a good job. We are actually tapping into Conservation Collier. We all pay money into Conservation Collier through a sales tax. And we've gotten $5 million of that back since I've been on the council. I'd like to keep returning that money. I was actually at a hearing this week on another parcel on Marco Island that was nominated. And I fought to get it approved and A-listed, but unfortunately, they didn't think it was high enough value. So there are lots that have been brought to the attention of Conservation Collier that people who know about the value of this think they're worth preserving. Conservation Collier is not going to buy all of them because Marco land is expensive. So yes, I do approve of spending city money on it, but not just going out and outright buying lots. I think it should be put there for matching funds. And the other thing that I just did, and I've been trying for three years, I got the council to approve creating a position for a fundraiser slash grant writer whose specific job will be to go after grant money and to go after private endowments, people who would like to purchase these lots and have naming rights and protect them. So that is going to happen in 2025. So it's kind of a combination issue.
Okay. Number three. I better tie myself in the seat, okay, for this one.
I know what this one is.
Oh, you do?
Water quality?
Oh, God, good guess. Okay, water quality has always been a concern for residents. Recently, city opted to test quarterly instead of monthly. Do you believe this testing schedule is adequate? Should the public be notified if bacteria levels indicate a non-healthy swimming environment?
I believe we're still testing monthly, but we're testing quarterly for algae, if I'm not mistaken. I think the water testing, the normal water testing that's been going on, it remains monthly. And we are now adding new quarterly testing.
Locations, oh.
Yeah. And that actually was an initiative that was brought forth by the Waterways Advisory Committee. I've been working with them on this. And that was one of the things they wanted me to bring to the council for the operating budget. And it passed. So we have additional money for this additional quarterly algae testing. We have rarely had any problems at all with bacteria levels because we don't have septic. We treat our waste. We don't, the bacteria and things are normally associated mostly with septic tanks overflowing. We don't have that problem on Marco Island. So the idea of bacteria counts that are excessive is very, very rare. And they're usually associated with some mega rain event where, you know, like we had two weeks of rain this spring where everything in the county flooded.
Everything.
Yeah. It didn't surprise me that some things that washed down from Golden Gate that might have been contained there wound up in our waterways. So I'm not too worried about the bacteria counts, but we do test for that.
Okay. The explosion of new building on the island has created a hodgepodge of architectural styles. Do you believe there should be an approval process on the type of structures being built? It's the first time I've seen this particular question.
Yeah, I'll answer that very simply, no, I don't. I really think that we have some of the strictest building standards in Florida as far as safety, as far as hurricane proofing. And that, to me, is the greatest concern. We also have land development codes that specify setbacks and heights and all the things that, to me, are more important than telling someone that we don't like your style of building because it's more modern than what we're used to. I mean, I really think that in the 12 years I've lived here, that's already changed. You know, that is already out of the box. I mean, those changes, where there would be a strict architectural code so all the buildings look the same, that ended at least 10 years ago before I ever got on city council. And all you have to do is drive around and look at some of the buildings that had been built before 2020 when I got on. So I think that that cat's already out of the bag. I think right now, I'm more concerned with safe buildings, hurricane-proof buildings, buildings that are, homes that are elevated high enough. The construction industry on Marco Island is, the standards are higher than anywhere you're going to find in southwest Florida.
Okay, good. I'm not sure that we've hit all these particular areas. You want to do a quick wrap-up, two minutes? Two minutes, and I will whack you, okay, when it's beyond that. That's what you want to tell the people that are out there listening to you.
I think everybody needs to realize that we live in paradise. And that some of the minor issues that people are obsessing about on social media and absolutely going nuts about don't affect the fact that you can walk out your front door and see some of the most beautiful sunrises and sunsets you'll see anywhere. We have the cleanest air. We have the safest streets. We have the friendliest people. We have, you know, we live in paradise. So just relax a little bit. We have very strict codes for our building standards. We have a development plan that was laid out 30 years ago that has apportioned this island into over 20,000 building lots. And what you're all seeing is people that own those building lots